Really?
Sorry.
It was pretty impressive. Are we set?
Yes, ma'am.
Not used to having so many people here. It's kind of weird. Relatives and everything. All right. I call the meeting order. We must have a crowd. Everybody stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on the bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, and Star Ledger newspapers. And Tap into, is that correct?
Yes.
And Tap into, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Before we get started with the rest of the meeting and open it up for the public to make comments for items that are on the agenda, we kind of have a big crowd here, and I know they all need to get home and get to bed really early for their big day tomorrow, so we'd like to go ahead and recognize them first. So we have Joe Sikala here, who's with the town council, who is going to make a presentation. But just before Joe gets started, I just want to say just a couple of words. First of all, the board, and we apologize for this, we never actually recognized the wrestling team last year for being, and this is very specific, the North Jersey Section Two Group One State Champs last year. And that's huge, because that's never happened before. So first of all, congratulations.
Yeah, round four. Well.
What? I hope that's correct. I thought I got that from a deep, did I do that right? Okay, like, I wrote it down to make sure I wouldn't mess it up. And then, secondly, also, we want to recognize not only the team as, for doing a great job, but we want to recognize the coaches and Coach Gududo and his team, and thank them for all of their hard work. The season is not a long season, it's a short season, and the amount of time that he and his team put in to help these kids is just enormous, and they all have, you know, they have lives, and they put everything on hold to help our kids be the best that they can absolutely be, and that's amazing. And what I find amazing, just from watching, is that for the coaches, it's absolutely about the kids. It's not about the coaches, it never is, it's all about what's in the best interest for these guys here, and that's amazing. And they, the coaches are in an incredible position to be such great role models for these kids, and I think these kids are all far better for having these coaches in their lives, and I really appreciate your effort, so thank you very much. And now I'd like Joe Sikala to come up, please, and do his thing.
Good evening, everybody. For those who don't know me, my name is Joe Sikala, I'm a councilman here in town, and before I was on the town council, I actually spent six and a half years on the Board of Education, so it's great to be back here tonight, and I bring that up because when I first started on the Board of Education, six or seven years ago, I guess seven years ago now, I always wondered how come there wasn't better communication between the town council and the Board of Education? And one of the things that I would always raise to the superintendent and to the board members, who were, who were the, I was the new guy, but the board members who had been on the board for a while was, you know, "Well, why can't we just go across the street? We're right across the street, let's just go ask the town council." And I was told it doesn't work that way. There's, was an invisible wall down Pomp and Avenue, and the Board of Ed was on one side and the town council was on the other. During my six years, that began to change with some of the people who have joined, joined the council, who were more in tune with, with, you know, the Board of Ed and what, what we were doing here. And I'm happy to say that that really has been a complete reversal at this point in time. Not only do we have almost a complete council who is really, really cares about what happens to our schools and our education, the education in our district, but now I'm on the council and, you know, as a former Board of Ed member, former president of the Board of Ed, you know, I'm a very big advocate for the Board of Education in the town, and I plan, and I hope to continue to do that. So my, my point for bringing all that up is, what, what better example than one day I'm driving to work and I get a text from our board president, Mrs. Dye, and she says, "Hey, can I just talk to you about, you know, maybe donating some money?" And I said, "Okay, what do you need?" And I thought she was talking about me personally, and she said, "Well, no," she said, "you know, our wrestling team has done an unbelievable job to, to raise money for new mats." And they didn't reach their goal, but they reached, I think she said that they raised, they needed to raise, you needed to raise eleven thousand dollars and you raised eight, and you really, you know, went out there and you did everything that you can, and you worked hard, and you came up a little short. And she asked if there was anything that, that the town council can do about it. And both Mayor Tenella and I went back to the, to the council, and we raised the issue, and, you know, we advocated for the wrestling team, for the district, and the council was able to come up with the balance of the money. So tonight, I'm happy to present the check to Mrs. Dye and the Board of Education and Mr. Featherman for three thousand dollars to go toward the purchase of the new mats. And beyond that, I wish everyone great luck in the states, and, you know, make us proud. Sure you will. Thank you.
And now, I know everybody needs to get home, but before everybody does that, could we just get maybe a nice little photo with Mr. Sikala? We do have, happen to have somebody here from Tap into who could take it for us. So if everybody would, go ahead. It's easier to upload, I've learned. I'm just going to upgrade the phone instead. Yeah, I heard it's great. Oh, yeah, Joe should hold the check.
Joe, you want to hold the check? Yeah.
We should at least have the prop, right?
Yeah. At least have, yeah, take it out of the envelope, absolutely.
He's got the, he's got the deposit slip. Yeah, if this was Dave, this would be a big check, right?
It would be a huge check.
Three grand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to pass this right on to Mr. Devita. So we're just going to take a, just a quick second to let all the wrestlers get out of here and go prepare for tomorrow. Exactly. The mat looks awesome, by the way. It looks so great.
Good luck.
See you tomorrow.
Good luck, guys.
My kid does.
Good luck.
Congratulations on that new mat.
Good luck, good luck.
Congratulations. Oh, absolutely. Yep, see you tomorrow. See you tomorrow. And then he's out of here. Thank you.
All that matters is he brought the money.
Exactly. Bye, Ellie. Thank you, Joe. All right. Well, it's always nice when people come and bring us money, right? That never happens. Exactly. All right, so we'll let everybody move up. It was nice to have a big crowd, right? I mean, this is still really nice, by the way, but, I know, and it didn't have anything to do with, like, you know, uniforms, or, it was a good thing. That's exactly it, yes. All right, moving on. So now, the meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. Okay? Is this on? It is?
Yes.
Jeanie Moreno, 42 Rugby Road. Forgive me, I have notes, because I always get elected to speak, so I'm here on behalf of the parents of the Cedar Grove High School Lacrosse Program. I have two children in the high school lacrosse program, I have a son who's a junior on the boys' team, and I have a freshman girl. I also have a little one, she's not there yet. In addition, I'm on the executive board of the youth lacrosse program. We came here tonight because we wanted to talk about the JV lacrosse coaches that we had heard are on the agenda for approval. We first heard that those coaches had been named on Saturday, and of course, our immediate question was, "Wow, what's the lacrosse experience?" Because honestly, we didn't know there was any, and unfortunately, we were right, there isn't any lacrosse experience, though there is coaching experience. This concerns us, because as you may know, lacrosse is a complicated sport. My son has been playing for seven years, and I still ask a lot of questions at games, and don't even get me started about girls lacrosse. Because lacrosse is relatively new to our town, we have high school students that are coming out for the team that have never played before, they don't know the rules, they don't have stick skills, and we are concerned about how those players are going to be developed with coaches who also don't have stick skills and don't know the rules. And these new players are key to the growth of our sport. While lacrosse is new to Cedar Grove, it's not new to a lot of people who are involved with the youth lacrosse program and some of our more experienced high school players. My son and several of his teammates have played on club lacrosse teams. In addition, the youth program has partnered with several club and developmental lacrosse programs to provide training for our players and coaches to continue to strengthen our program. Because of this, we have contacts that we feel could be helpful in trying to find additional candidates for these JV coaching experience, this JV coaching jobs. Given that we just found out about the coaches on Saturday, we'd like to ask for a little time to see if maybe another candidate could be found. I realize that we are late to the table, and the season begins in just a few weeks, but we'd still like you to consider our request. If it's not possible, then please know we fully support the coaches that are approved and would like you to consider us as a resource going forward. The youth program has winter workouts every Saturday morning, and we would welcome the coaches to come and check it all out. We have experienced club coaches there who provide training, so if they're interested, we're there. So please know that this has nothing to do with the coaches personally, we are strictly worried about lacrosse IQ and want to continue to strengthen our program. As always, we appreciate you hearing us out, and we appreciate the support you've shown our program. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for items that are on the agenda? You got to stand up there, Mr. Jablonski, yep, state your name and address, please. Oh, yeah, you want to change your mind?
I changed my mind. Too late, too late, you're there. My name's Walter Jablonski, I'm on Tower Drive, I have two daughters in town, both in the lacrosse program as well. Jeanie made a lot of really great points. Not only is it a skill game that takes quite a bit of time to develop, it takes quite a bit of time to learn how to coach as well. There are a number of five, six, and seven, eight coaches here as well. We've gone through a number of different training sessions that have taken us probably two years to learn the rules of lacrosse, and it's not, my concern is not necessarily just skills development, it's the safety of the children, too, because there are a lot of rules that are built into the game that are meant to protect the children's health. Ball moves at a very, very fast speed, that's why the girls wear helmets, that's why they're making moves with the United States Lacrosse Association down the road to actually add helmets to the mix in the next two years. All of that is designed to help with the, excuse me, the safety of the kids as well, so just something else to add to the consideration, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Katron?
Hi, Frank Katron, 169 Young. I'd like to say also that we've worked tirelessly to build up the program, and we've all taken classes on coaching, and to bring in coaches without experience is just absolutely crazy. You're talking about, if you said, "All right, you're a math teacher, but you're going to coach English, or you're going to teach English," it doesn't make sense. These kids, and it's our obligation, they've, they've learned, they've worked through the program, they've gone through the program, we're bringing out new kids, we need to make, have a coaching search for coaches with experience. So that's what my thoughts are.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, we discussed it and we agree with you. And so, we talked about it, and we've agreed that we are going to table the vote for the JV lacrosse coaches for both of them until the next meeting. Mr. Featherman and his team have tried really hard to try to find coaches with experience, because we agree with everything that you're saying, and we haven't really been successful, in all honesty. We've advertised twice. So we talked about it as a board, that maybe we need to explore different ways to advertise for this type of position, because kind of what we tried didn't necessarily work. And I know the lacrosse club has offered to, to try to use their resources to see if there's anybody that they can help identify, so we asked Mr. Featherman to, you know, talk with the club and, and see if there's anywhere else we can also post to look for experienced coaches. And obviously, you know, a lot of you have been trained, so if anybody's interested in the job, you should apply, I'm just saying. But yeah, no, in all seriousness, we do understand that, and then we obviously would prefer to hire somebody who's played the game before, we get that, and so we're going to table that aspect of the vote for the next meeting, so. Oh, wait, does he have to kind of stand, or, sorry, you got to, you got to be official about it, right?
Todd St. Laurent, 25 Oak Drive. Also, you could advertise at NJ SIA, the coaches' website. I've coached lacrosse at Biquanik, West Essex, Fairlawn, Indian Hills, Bergen Tech. Whenever I look for coaching positions, I go to NJ SIA, go to Coach a Vacancy, and it puts down spring coaches, winter coaches, and that's where I first looked to see what's out there for, for coaching positions.
Great. Do we currently do that, do you know? All right, well, we appreciate that suggestion. That's great, thank you. So maybe if you just talk to Mr. Gogarty or, or Mr. Featherman, that'd be great. Thank you.
Just like to comment, we, we're closer on this issue than some of you may think. You know, my team, as you know, I don't have to defend them or speak on their behalf necessarily. You know that we're all in, and we have nothing but the best interest of our student athletes in mind, always. That's just who we are as people. I think I know most of you in the room, I think you know that of us. So, you know, it wasn't easy for us to, for me, frankly, to table a recommendation, given the fact that we've gone through a lengthy process. We had advertised back from late December through January to today unsuccessfully. We re-advertised the position again in NJ Hire and the Star Ledger to no avail. We're looking for the same things, we've been looking for the same things as you all along. And we're, we're certainly learning some things along the way about finding who these lacrosse people are and how to kind of flesh them out. And so we're certainly agreeing to give this a little bit more time, and we, we think that the folks that we recommended will understand that when we have this conversation with them tomorrow about the position that we're in and the concerns we all have about finding qualified, highly qualified lacrosse people. But this is my plea, if you're out there, come forward now, because we've been looking for you for well over a month and a half now, and none of you have thrown your hat in the ring. You know, we're more than willing to put you through the process and interview you, but they haven't come forward. So if and when you meet these people, have them send Mr. Gogarty, myself, Mr. Mangili a resume, we want to meet you, we want to bring you on, potentially, on our team. So we feel the same way as you, we're disappointed in the lack of response, it's taken a lot of time out of these guys' hands to, you know, search and talk to people. So we want the same things, I just want you to know that. We just haven't had those folks come forward. So we're going to certainly post it on NJ SIA and maybe some other areas, and see if we can draw some of these folks out. We want to meet them, we want our head coaches to meet them, and if there is compatibility, we want to bring them on board. So just please know that we've gone through the process, we're, we're with you in terms of what we're looking for. You know, Rob and I and Rick have talked about it at length, where are these people? We don't have them. So the, the people that we did choose were our seasoned coaches who have experience with running programs, and frankly, we feel good about those people, should we not find anyone? And I think at the end of the day, you will as well. One more time, if you're out there looking into the camera and you're interested in coaching lacrosse, please apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I know as much as you're all, most of you are riveted to listen to the rest of the agenda, I will, none of us will be insulted in the least.
Oh, no, 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 wait, 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 wait. You want to come out here, now you'll listen to the policy changes. Time out here.
So feel free, if you want to go, we will take 30 seconds to let you clear out, but by all means, you're welcome to stay, we're back in North End, which is exciting, I didn't even get a chance to, this is the first one, yeah, absolutely. We almost all drove to the wrong school today, so, yeah, so it's, so we're excited to be back, and while we're not quite live yet, which was the primary reason for coming back here, we're going to be eventually, right? Eventually, right? So just a small technical snap, too. So, anyway, so that's that.
So she's giving you guys 30 seconds.
Yeah, if you want to, it's totally fine.
It's your choice.
Thank you for coming, and we appreciate it, and we appreciate your level of involvement, too, so. Oh, all those wrestlers, they probably took them all. Have a good night, thank you. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yep. Five seconds, Ms. McCall, hurry up. Some of us don't want to be here all night. No, they're not, come on. They're on the payroll, they have to stay. All right, seriously, moving on to committee reports, I feel like we're all, we've been everywhere, but now we're only at committee reports.
Yeah, no, I just was going to say that, um, we, we did the policy committee, and I'll let Mike speak to that ad nauseam. I have no, I don't have anything more to add on that. For the Recreation Board liaison, the meeting last week was postponed, and it's going to be tomorrow night, so I'll have more on update on that at the next time, so that's all I have at this point.
Well, we appreciate you taking on those committees.
Absolutely.
Especially the policy one.
Yes.
Yeah, and the rec. Mr. Shonar?
Yes, I went to the Music Matters meeting, which was on January 19th, and they were just going over and reviewing all the various different things that they're going to be doing. Obviously, the biggest thing is Cedar Grove High School doing the musical Sister Act is their big thing. They're planning on the trip to New Hampshire, and it's various other many musical things that they're doing, so they have a lot, I don't want to go through every single one, but the big thing is Sister Act that's coming up, and they're really, really excited about that. And the, part of Sister Act they do every year is they also have a senior dinner, where they invite the seniors to come up, watch the show, and they get dinner. It's dinner and a show, so that's a really big deal.
Nice.
And they also went to the middle school, met my, yes, I met my good friend Nick Decourt, and, and they have a lot going on there, a lot going on. They have Treps is March 19th, they're getting ready to do their park testing, because park testing will actually be part of the curriculum, it will be part of the, in order to graduate, they're getting that ready, how they're processing that, they're working on a partnership with RECO, Recon, I guess?
RECO.
RECO, working on a partnership with RECO. They're also developing one of the technology labs, about having the more, more Google-esque, you know, that kind of Google technology lab, being more of a fluid learning environment in some of the classrooms. They are also going to be doing a debate club, there is a talk about a debate club.
Really?
Yes, it came up, and doing a debate club, and then they are also, the FSA is going to be having, I guess it's, they're working on the Student Faculty Challenge, Student Faculty Challenge there, and then it's the, I guess it's the Natural History Bee, it's held in the springtime, they're doing some.
The eighth graders?
Yes, they're getting ready to do that, so there was a lot going on, with the biggest thing being Treps, everyone should come out to Treps.
Absolutely.
Yes, and, yes, it was really good.
Thank you, I appreciate you going, I normally would have gone to the middle school FSA meeting, but I was at the wrestling meet last night, so I appreciate you taking my place on that one. One thing I almost forgot to mention is that Mr. Featherman and I went to our coffee talk, we did, on January 19th, and there was a record crowd, I mean, there were, I stopped counting at nine, which is, no, in all honesty, it's a lot, because we've had, you know, I think, you know, a couple, nine is a lot, in all honesty, I mean, it's hard to get people to come out at night, there's a lot of competing things, I mean, look, everybody's gone now. But no, we had a great conversation with a lot of parents, I think a lot of it was a lot of middle school parents, and some of the, the stress and the angst of kind of being a fifth grader and the, and the work involved, and Mr. Featherman gave some great advice about, you know, let them be fifth graders and do their own work, and just kind of, I thought that was nice, because sometimes that's hard. Yes, but we all acknowledge that fifth grade is not the same fifth grade it was even just a few years ago, it's definitely a lot more challenging, and obviously, there's a lot more requirements and expectations than there were even five years ago. So, but I thought it was a great discussion, and it was nice, we even had a special appearance by Mr. Canela, he even came by, it was great. Full disclosure, we probably had a number of people, because it was also on the same night as the North End FSA meeting, and it was prior to the North End FSA meeting, but you know what, people took time to come early, and they didn't have to, so, yes, and they, right, we were hoping they would, not that they wouldn't. So, so that was great, and we appreciate that, and the next one is in February.
23rd.
Thank you. Is it a 7:00 AM or a 7:00 PM? Okay. Stay tuned for our next one.
7:00 AM, 7:00 AM, the middle school.
That's fantastic, so some board member, yet to be determined, will be joining, Mr. Featherman, at 7:00 AM. I don't know if Mr. Shonar's made an appearance for a coffee talk yet.
I have, yes. Actually have made an appearance at a coffee talk, I did, the South End Coffee Talk.
Well, we will see who draws the long straw on that one, but, but it's, it's really great, because it's, it's, it's really, you know, there's, there's not an agenda at all, we just kind of sit, and whatever anybody wants to talk about, we do, and so you never quite know what's going to be brought up, and so that's kind of great. So anyway, I encourage everybody to come to the coffee talk, so. Anything else on committees? Okay, good, all righty. All right, so we did the board presentation already, that's fantastic, so we're moving on. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion for B1 through B3, please?
So moved.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of January 17th, 2017. B2 is a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of December, 2016, and B3 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code, and further pursuant to such code, no major account or fund has been over expended in violation of the code. Any comment? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shonar?
Aye.
Mr. Valero?
Aye.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Under Business, can I have a motion for B4 through B9?
So moved.
Second.
B4 is a motion to approve the special services subscription to MBI in the amount listed therein. B5 is a motion to accept the generous donation for, from the Cedar Grove Junior Wrestling Booster Club in the amount of $5,000 to be used towards the purchase of a new wrestling mat for the Cedar Grove High School. And just to be clear, that's the money that the wrestling team raised on their own, that's different from the check that the town council gave us tonight. B6 is a motion to accept the donation of two Epi pens from the medicine shop in Cedar Grove, valued at approximately $1,200. B7 is a motion to approve Brahma Construction Corp. payment application number eight, in the amount listed therein for the work done at North End and South End. B8 is a motion to allow Dr. Michael Hodges, Assistant Professor and Physical Education Program Director at William Patterson University, Department of, can Program Director at William Patterson University, Department of Concealology, to record, to video record certain activities to highlight publicly what quality physical education lessons and practice tasks should actually look like. And B9 is a motion to accept the generous donation from the Cedar Grove High School APT in the amount of $500 from the beautification fund. Should we add a B10 to accept the donation from the town council, or should we do that on the next? I defer to my BA, or?
I guess we could do it here, I'm trying to, did we already do that?
I don't think we accepted the money.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, B10.
We're all about rolling with it, right? We just, so B10 is a motion to accept the generous donation from the Cedar Grove Town Council in the amount of $3,000 to be used towards the wrestling mat. That's what I wrote. All right, any comment?
The B9 is for, it's for the letters on the school.
And they look great, by the way.
They look amazing.
They are, they look fantastic.
They are the biggest letters in the state.
Are they really?
Yes.
I have no doubt. Is there a spotlight, by the way, on the letters?
Can you verify that, David? No, we, we're working on that.
Are you?
We have to work on that, yes.
Okay. Are we working on the banner on the back of the school, by the way? It's looking a little, I knew you were, I knew it, okay.
He's got this.
Yes.
Right.
Are we, are we keeping it a surprise as to what it's for? Is that what you want to? We can, there's no pressure.
No, absolutely.
By the way, we're having this meeting real quick, 1, 2, 3, tonight.
Okay, so I'm going to make the executive decision, we're not going to disclose what it's for, and it's a surprise, because-
In due time, all will be revealed.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, tweet it down and-
And we're excited.
Yes, and Facebook.
Fantastic, which, which everybody should like, by the way.
Yes.
It is a great thing.
It is.
It really is.
We're never ending this meeting, we're going so, like, far off, just, we're digressing. Is there any more comment? None, great.
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. And it's a little late now, but did we do roll call in the beginning? We didn't, did we?
No, we did not.
I'm sorry. I thought about that, but you know we're here, right?
I'm not here for that.
Moving on.
You know who to mark in Africa.
Exactly. All right, from the Office of the Superintendent Schools Under Personnel, so I'm going to do S1 through S3 first, please.
So moved.
Have a motion, okay.
Second.
S1 is a motion to approve a change from full-time lunch duty to split-time lunch duty for the teachers listed therein for the 2016-17 school year effective January 2nd. S2 is a motion to approve Alicia and Joan to serve as high school detention monitor at the rate listed therein. And S3 is a motion to accept the resignation of Donna Zambrano for purpose of retirement, retirement, South End second grade teacher, effective June 30th, 2017. Any discussion?
Mrs. Zambrano's leaving.
I know.
And also Mrs. Davis, too.
I know.
Mrs. Davis leaving, too.
Mrs. Zambrano, we will absolutely miss her. I mean, we miss everybody, but she, yeah, absolutely. She taught at both North End and South End. All three of my kids had her, not, I can't really say that about many people, so she's just a, a nice person, and we will really miss her.
Yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. So for S4, well, first of all, can I have a motion for S4?
So moved.
Second.
And with the exception of the JV across coaches, as we discussed before, S4 is a motion to approve the following stipends for coaching positions for the 2016-17 school year for the spring. Is that good? Any discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Okay, can I have a motion for S5 through?
Now, we're going to go for the whole shebang?
S13.
So moved.
Second.
S5 is a motion to approve the following staff for substitute SAT prep teacher, as listed therein, at the rate listed there. S6 is a motion to approve the Cedar Grove School District to serve as host for a Google Classroom Pilot Program for the 2016-17 school year. Maybe during the comment, you can just kind of talk a little bit about what that is.
That's great.
Okay. S7 is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses for the policy. S8 is a motion to approve the following, as high school volunteers, S, oh, I'm sorry, as school volunteers, sorry. S9 is a motion to approve Rafael Laquente, substitute custodian, for the district at the rate listed therein. S10 is a motion to approve the following substitute teachers for the 16-17 school year at the rate listed therein. S11 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S12 is a motion to approve the following leave of absence. And S13 is a motion to approve the following student for, students for classroom observation. Any comment? Mr. Fretherman, if you could just explain a little bit about the Google Classroom?
Yes, a special thank you and shout out to Tanya Liddy, who reached out to, as we call him, the Google guy. As you may know, as some of you do know, we are pushing the G Suite here across the district, formerly known as Google Apps for Education, and one of our initiatives is to expand the use of Google Classroom. So when the opportunity came to us to apply to Google directly to be a pilot district, wherein we basically promote the idea and ask for volunteers in each of our buildings to actively use Google Classroom, and beyond that, it's to actively provide feedback to Google directly about the pros and the cons of the new applications of Google Classroom using their actual classroom. So Google is very interested to learn from Google Classroom educators, Cedar Grove among them, on how their new applications are working in, in real, relevant time. So we're thrilled to be a part of that, and we just see this as another sort of component to our future-ready initiative, so, you know, we'll, we'll be rolling more out in the near future about that, and just this sort of fits in very nicely.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Mm-hmm. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. So for S14, we should listen, you're going to talk to us about the policies, yeah, that, and then, and then we'll go ahead and have a motion to approve, right? Okay. So we might all want to-
Have a seat, boys.
Sit back for just a few. Mr. Fretherman is going to speak to us about some of policy, brief as possible, policies that are up for updates and revisions.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Dai.
Absolutely.
As you had heard referenced from Mr. Valero, we had a meeting on January 18th, myself and the policy committee, to review all of the policy revisions, updates, and in some cases, new policies and regs that are on the market, that our policy provider Strauss Esme encourages us, and by and large, we're required, because they're mandated, to adopt. What I will do is read a very brief summary of each of those updates. For the record, please go on our website, we have a new link there, where you just, under policies, you can type in the text box, whatever the topic is, key search words, it might be direct deposit, it might be management of, of head lice.
That's great.
Good example.
That's a perfect example, once it gets their attention.
Right, timely. You do that right in the, in the search box, and it takes you right to our policy and reg. So I'm going to read this very quickly, but by all means, at home, search our policy repository, and it's all there. I will read through these very quickly. Okay, 1220, employment of chief school administrator. Minor code revisions are indicated in this update, but otherwise, no substantive changes have occurred to this policy guide. This is mandated. 1310, employment of school business administrator/board secretary. This is a revision. In addition to the updated site changes, a few additional revisions are proposed. The training and/or experienced skills outlined in the second paragraph have been updated to align with the requirements in the new code. In addition, this guide has been updated to indicate the school business administrator/board secretary position will be appointed by the board upon the recommendation of the superintendent, which is consistent with code. Any reference to the interview process has been removed from this guide, as this process may vary from district to district. 2414, programs and services for students in high poverty and in high need school districts. This is a revision. Several legal sites within the regulation guides have been updated. The policy guide does not need to be updated, as there are no Chapter 9 Code citations within the guide. This is mandated. 3111, creating positions. This is a revision. In addition to the updated site changes, a few additional revisions are proposed. The additional revisions provide additional details on the administrative code requirement regarding the approval process for a school district that desires to use an unrecognized title, or if a previously unrecognized title exists. This is a recommendation, but the board has chosen to adopt. 3124, employment contract, a revision. In addition to the updated site changes, a few additional revisions are proposed. The updated policy guide provides additional guidance regarding termination of a contract by the board or a teaching staff member. The updated guide indicates the employment contract will include a termination provision, unless the staff member is represented by a collective bargaining agreement that has termination provisions. Termination of employed for tenured staff members is governed by statute. 3125, employment of teaching staff members. This is a revision. In addition to the updated site changes, there was one major addition to this policy guide, based on a recent New Jersey Supreme Court case, Bridgewater-Raritan versus Board of Education, Bridgewater-Raritan School District. The court determined in Bridgewater, a school district must provide an employee's specific notice if the employee is serving as a replacement staff member. The court indicated in Bridgewater, absent such notice on employees serving in a possible eligible, sorry, absent such notice, an employee serving in a position eligible for tenure, who is replacing a teaching, teaching member on leave during an absence, disability, or disqualification, would begin to accrue tenure in their replacement position. This language is not in the statute, but has been interpreted by the court to include a notice provision. We, by the way, are acutely aware of this, and make note of that in our contracts when we hire short-term and/or long-term replacement teachers. They're not tenure tracked, and we therefore acknowledge that in the contract. 3125.2, employment of substitute teachers. A new administrative code section provides detailed regulations regarding time period limitations for people serving as a substitute teacher with certain certificates in certain positions. 3126, district mentoring program. A major revision in administrative code concerns a school district's mentoring program. The policy and regulation guide has been revised to reflect the updates. The regulation guide has also been reorganized with updated code requirements. The name of the policy and regulation guide has been changed to, quote, "district mentoring program." 3141, resignation, this is a revision. In addition to the updated site changes, an additional revision providing more specific language consistent with code regarding a tenured teaching staff member's lack of adequate notice has been added. 3144, certification of tenure charges. Citations have been removed and legal citations updated. 3159, teaching staff members/school district reporting responsibilities. In addition to the updated site changes, there were some additional site revisions within the content of this policy guide. Division of Youth and Family Services, in quotes, has been updated to Department of Children and Families, Division of Child Protection and Permanency. There were also a minor, there was also a minor wording revision. 3231, outside employment as athletic coach. Citations in code have been updated. 3240, professional development for teachers and school leaders, this is a revision. A major revision and recodification of the administrative code concerns PD for teachers and school leaders requiring major changes in policy and reg. The new code sections align PD for teachers and school leaders to professional standards and provide more details on PD. Legal citations were also updated. 3244, in-service training. This one has been abolished. Policy and reg 3240 has rendered this policy and reg obsolete. Therefore, policy guide 3244 is abolished. Regulation guide 3244 is also abolished. 4159, support staff member/school district reporting responsibilities. This is a revision. This policy guide references the administrative code regarding a support staff member's reporting responsibilities. The only revision in this policy guide is the updated code citation. 5305, health services personnel, a revision. In addition to the updated site changes, there were some additional site revisions within the content of this policy guide. 5330, administration of medication. Several legal sites within the regulation guide have been updated. The policy guide does not need to be updated, as there are no code citations within that policy guide. 5350, student suicide prevention. In addition to the updated site changes, there were some additional site revisions within the content of this policy guide. Division of Youth and Family Services was updated, again, to Department of Children and Families, Division of Child Protection and Permanency. 9541, student teachers and interns. In addition to the updated site changes, there is an additional site revision within the content of the policy guide under the option. Strauss Esme recommends school districts consider the option of requiring every student, teacher, and intern permitted to be required to have a substitute certificate, which requires the student, teacher, or intern to complete a criminal history background check. Cedar Grove requires that provision. 5339, screening for dyslexia. This policy guide has been revised to align with the International Dyslexia Association's board-approved definition and the administrative change made by the NJ DOE relative to dyslexia. 5514, student use of vehicles on school grounds. This policy guide has been significantly revised to a simpler format to accommodate the uniqueness of how each district handles students driving an automobile, riding a bike, or using a scooter or skateboard, or other means of transportation to get to and from school. Or kids actually still walk to the school, I don't know.
I don't think so.
Riding a bike, perhaps?
No.
7481, unmanned aircraft systems. This is a new policy. School districts have requested a policy guide, us among them, addressing the use of unmanned aircraft systems on school grounds. The operation of UAS is regulated by the Federal Aviation Administration. The FAA drafted proposed regulations that have been released, but have not yet been approved. The operation of basically a drone has new risks and liability issues for school districts. School districts are permitting the use of drones for school-related use, as we are. This policy guide has been developed to provide guidance to school districts in this area. 8441, care of injured and ill persons. Revisions to code relocate, revisions to code relocated several sections of the administrative code, requiring legal citation updates to this policy. Administrative code requires each BOE to adopt policies and procedures for the provision of health services in emergency situations, including the care of any student who becomes ill or injured while at school, or participating in school-sponsored functions, the transportation and supervision of any student determined to be in need of immediate care, and the notification to parents of any student determined to be in need of immediate, immediate medical care. 8454, management of pediculosis, AKA head lice. This is a new policy. School districts have requested policy guidance dealing with students coming to school with head lice. This policy guide has been developed to provide such guidance to school districts. There is no specific educational or health statute or code regarding head lice in schools, but this policy guide offers some guidance, and we're happy to take it. The Cedar Grove School District has chosen to opt for a knit-free policy, which is a continuation of current practices, which has been reviewed by the district's nursing which is a continuation of current practices, which has been reviewed by the district's nursing staff and revised accordingly. Eighty-six thirty and Regulation eighty-six thirty, bus driver, bus aid responsibility, emergency school bus procedures. The Commissioner of Education developed training program requires school bus drivers and bus aides to be properly trained on procedures for interacting with students with special needs. The new law requires trained bus drivers and bus aides provide a certification to the district if they completed this training, and the certificate shall be maintained by the district for the duration of the individual's employment. Fifteen ten, Americans with Disabilities Act. This policy guide has been revised due to major changes enacted in the Americans with Disabilities Act, Amendments Act of two thousand and eight, specifying how the definition of disability, quote unquote, should be interpreted and applied. The intent of Congress in the amendment was to reassert a broad scope of protection under the ADA. Significant changes, as summarized in the ADA Amendments Act final rule, are included in this new regulation guide. Twenty-four fifteen point three zero, Title One, Educational Stability for Children in Foster Care. This is a new policy. School districts recently received an NJ DOE memorandum requiring school districts to have policies and procedures in place to ensure the educational stability for children in foster care. Namely, if there's a children in foster care and they are transferred to another community, they can finish the school year out in that original district.
If they're, if they're in foster care.
Correct, if they're in foster care. Twenty-four eighteen, Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, students. This is new. Policy and reg guides twenty-four eighteen are new. Section five oh four was previously referenced in Policy Guide fifteen ten, which is updated in this policy alert. These new policy and reg guides reflect the broadened interpretation of disability in the implementation of this legislation. We're almost there, folks. Fifty-one sixteen, education of homeless children. These guides expand the definition of, of a homeless child, require additional responsibilities of the district's homeless liaison, who happens to be Mr. Kinney, and require an immediate decision and enrollment of a homeless child pending resolution of a dispute. A homeless policy and reg guide is not required by statute or code, but these guides are highly recommended to be adopted by boards of ed, as these guides provide important guidance in this area. Eighty-three thirty, student records. Administrative code was recently revised and adopted, requiring revisions to this policy and reg guide. The revisions are not significant, as the new code addresses the use and storage of electronic records, revises the parent appeal process to require a parent to appeal to the BOE before appealing to the Commissioner of Ed, and several minor issues of clarification. Two more. Twenty-three forty, field trips. This is a revision, as we've been discussing. This policy has been revised to reflect the Board of Education's requirement that district personnel, not parents, serve as chaperones for overnight field trips. Lastly, sixty-five eleven, direct deposit. The Board of Ed may determine to have the net pay of all school district employees directly deposited in a specific banking institution, a checking account, savings, or share account designated in writing by the employee. If the board approves a direct deposit program, which we have, compliance by an employee shall be mandatory. However, the board may grant an exemption from the mandatory requirement on such terms as conditioned, as the board deems necessary. I.e., we've grandfathered some people. Thank you.
Is that all? There's not any more?
That's all I've got.
So, are there any questions about the, the, what Mr. Featherson talked about with any of the policies before we go ahead and, and vote on them?
I just want to take, thank Vinnie for going through all this. Thanks for taking it all for the team.
Your nominee.
Yes, yeah, this was... Yep. I may live to regret.
All right, then, can I have a motion for S fourteen and S fifteen?
So moved.
Second.
S fourteen is a motion to approve the first reading of the fa, the following policy updates, such revisions, that Mr. Featherson just read to us. S fifteen is a motion to approve a waiver of the SEMI program for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year as the district does not meet the minimum number of students who fall below the category of economically disadvantaged. Any comment? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S sixteen?
So moved. Second.
S sixteen is a motion to approve the following contracts for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services. Any comment? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. A meeting is open to the public for comments on items on or off the agenda. Seeing none. Announcement of future meeting, sorry. February twenty-eighth, here at the North End Media Center, seven PM, and March fourteenth, here, again, at North End, eight PM, regular meeting.
I just want to say how great it is to be back here. Just the nice, pure comfort of these tables. I do apologize to the middle school, but it wasn't exactly cozy with four guys at the end of the table.
Those of us on the left side didn't have any problems.
Yeah, I noticed that. It was nice and...
Well, we may, we may take it on the road at some point.
We may be taking it on the road. I gotta see how spotlights work, you know? I gotta see which side's better.
Right.
There's things to consider here. I can't just make these decisions.
Yeah.
Well, we are happy to be back, right?
Yeah, we are. And we are very happy to come visit at the high school as well.
Yes.
Soon.
Right. Okay, have a motion to end.
So moved.
Second.
No comment.
Not on that one.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. It's over. Have a good evening.